You ready, Mr. Beersted?
Sorry, 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 guys.
All right. I'll call the meeting of the River Falls Common Council to order for the March 12th, 2024. First thing we'll do, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all.
All right. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Beerstead.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morset.
Here.
Miller. Odine.
Here.
All right. Next, we'll have the approval of the minutes of the February 27th, 2024 meeting, the workshop and regular, as well as the workshop and regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Mr. Council President, I do want to do one quick amendment, if possible.
We need a second before we can discuss.
Second.
So we had a first by Bjork, second by Beerstead. All right, you have a question?
I just want to do one quick amendment. On the bottom of page three, it says the phrase, "So we can continue having this good cost return that we had in the future, in the future when I was talking." And it's just missing one word, and it should read, "So we can continue having the good cost return we have had in the future." So "have" being the amendment I want to put in there, just so it's clear.
All right, we got a request for an amended to the minutes. Is there a second?
Sounds good, second.
All right. So we got a Downing, Bjork amendment. Any other discussion on the minutes? First, we're going to vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so the amendment passes. Now we'll vote on the approval of the minutes. We have a first by Bjork and a second by Beerstead. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we need roll call votes, don't we? Yeah, okay, clerk, please do a roll call.
Bjork.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Morset.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Beerstead.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right. We'll move on to the approval of bills with Mr. Beerstead.
Mr. President and council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $1,152,991.66, subject to the controller's review.
Second.
The first by Beerstead, second by Downing. Any discussion? All right, clerk, please ask a roll call vote.
Odine.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Morset.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Beerstead.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
All right, bills are approved. Look at the progress we're making. All right. Next, we'll go to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to make a public comment, you have two minutes. If you'd like to step forward, tell us, make your public comment and sign in. Anyone at all? Okay, anybody on the council?
Yes, I'd like to just make a comment. Our city has quite a privilege this weekend, starting on Friday and ending on Sunday. The Frozen Four for the Division III Women's Hockey Championship will be here in River Falls. So a team from Vermont, a team from New York, a team from Michigan, and our own UW River Falls Fighting Falcons will be playing for the chance to be national champs, the Division III for hockey. So there'll be a lot of outer towners in there. So this is a big event like the Northern Badger Wrestling Tournament. There's a lot of people that come in from outer town. So let's continue to be River Falls friendly.
Very good. I've got one quick comment. On Saturday night, I did a ride along with the police officers here in town. Wanted to thank Sergeant Dolmire, Officers Hemker, Sather, and McGinty for allowing me to ride along with them. It was a slow night, thankfully. There was a few things that happened, but the thing that I saw that I really enjoyed was the camera system that we've got installed in the cars, both the body cams and the license plate readers. So those are great technology that helps our men and women in uniform. The other thing is that they really enjoy ride alongs. So I'm urging my fellow council members to schedule a ride along. Contact Deputy Chief Kennett, and he will set you up. It's very simple, and it's a good thing to do. So anybody else have any public comments? No? All right, the next one we're going to move into is code enforcement. And Planning and Engineering Technician Tyler Gallid will come up and tell us all about code enforcement efforts. All right.
Tyler, real quick, good job walking up there without crutches, so that was good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm doing my best.
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, council. I'm Tyler Galde. You almost got it.
Galde, I'm sorry.
Almost got it. This evening, I'm going to be telling you, giving you a little update on our kind of code enforcement process over the last few years. We've done some updates and how that's going. So first tonight, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the background. Then we'll talk about some of the implementations that staff's been doing. Our, the city's approach with working with people when it comes to code enforcement. And then I'll be sharing just a few quick statistics about code enforcement cases. In June of 2021, council approved the move from, the transition from a reactive approach to a proactive approach in code enforcement. Meaning, instead of waiting until somebody calls us about violation, we're being more proactive in trying to find those violations and get those taken care of before we get a phone call from somebody. And council approved this, knowing that this would be a pretty slow transition. We didn't want it to be abrupt, and it's happened over the process of about two years. Some of the implementations that we've done. First, in 2021, with that transition to a proactive approach, we adopted a code enforcement manual. So this is something that's great for staff because we have a set approach, a set process for how we handle our code enforcement cases. The image on this screen is a flow chart that is from our code enforcement manual. This gives us the step-by-step, and we can make decisions based on what is happening, whether they're in compliance or not compliant. It just gives us something to fall back on when we have some situations that we maybe haven't come across before. Another addition was in 2021. Position was added and filled. That would spend half of its time in working on code enforcement and the other half of the working time in a different department. Now, this is important for us to add some capacity to our code enforcement, especially doing this proactive approach. It allows us to get out and about a little more into the city, as well as help with some of the transition and implementation of this new approach. In 2022, council approved some city ordinance modifications, which I will talk about in the next slide. And another thing that we were looking at was getting some sort of code compliance software, somewhere where we could have a central location for all of our code enforcement cases, record, for record-keeping, all of our letters. And after doing some research, we realized that, we found out that a lot of those softwares come in bigger packages than we were really ready for, which, you know, typically includes like building inspections, building permitting, a lot of that stuff that we're not quite set up to make that transition to. So instead of that, we have been trying to utilize our internal GIS software. One of the things that is in progress for us is the building of an app for our staff to use when they're out and about in the field. So say I'm out and about and I see a violation. So I'll be able to pull up my phone and put a GPS point right where that violation is. I can put in the information, you know, what is the violation, when it happened? I can take a picture of it, so we have that record. And then all we have to do when we get back to the office is send out a letter. It really helps streamline our process. And then, over the last couple of years, education and outreach has been important throughout this. With that transition, we didn't want it to be very abrupt because if we're making these changes, we need to educate the public on what these changes are to give them a chance to learn what the changes are so they don't violate them. So some of the things we've done are publishing little articles in the River Falls Reader. And a big one that we did was, in regards to signage, is send out letters to local businesses, nonprofits, realty companies because those are, they are typically using off-premise signage, and we wanted to make sure they knew what those new ordinance was, would be and what they're allowed to do. And another step in our proactive approach is more regular monitoring. So typically, what happens is a staff member will take an hour or two on a Friday. We'll go drive through a section of town looking for any violations. And each week, we kind of methodically work our way throughout the city, hitting all the sections in town. Once we're done, we start all over again. And we found quite a few violations doing this, and we're able to get those taken care of before we get a phone call from an upset resident. So in August of 2022, council approved new ordinance updates. These ordinance updates improved parking, parking on residential properties, some things in our Public Nuisance Code, residential rental uses, our signage code, which was a big one, not allowing signs on public property or in the public right-of-way. It also updated some enforcement procedures, as well as expanded. All of these updates mostly expanded the language in our ordinances. So what this did was eliminated gray area within our city code and made things more enforceable. For example, in our nuisance code, we now have a pretty robust list of items that you cannot just store in your yard. Before, it was pretty open for interpretation. So along with all of those things, I think it's important to talk about our approach when it comes to working with people. First and foremost, we want to build some sort of relationship with a resident. We want them to have a good experience and good interaction with the staff. And those relationships also help us to get to know that person and have some empathy for whatever's going on in their lives. When, typically when a code enforcement case gets to a second or third letter in our process, there's typically some sort of compliance barrier. Something that we're not seeing is stopping them from coming into compliance, whether it's time, money, mental or physical health, disabilities. If we can develop some sort of relationship and learn about those things, learn what is preventing them from coming into compliance, we can better help them by getting them, giving them extensions if we're making progress or getting them in touch with the local organizations to help with cleanup, whatever it may be. So. Yeah. And then some, beautiful, this chart. Over the, so, over the last two years, from 2021 to 2023, we have seen a, it's about a 52% increase in code violations. Majority, the vast majority of that can be attributed to our updated sign ordinance. So we treat each sign in the right-of-way as an individual violation. So that's been, that's been the major change that we've seen in violations. Typically, when we see those violations, we've been, we'll reach out to those people, whoever that may be, and let them know that they can't put their signs there anymore. And in 2020, in 2020, you may see a dip in cases, and that was during the pandemic when we were not, we're kind of, I don't know. We weren't being as diligent there, yeah, about code enforcement as we had other things going on. Yeah, that's what I got.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I, no, you go, Sean.
All right, I have a question. And my question is, you talked about regular monitoring, and I just want to encourage a process in the future where we have difficult areas of the city. And I know in my district, District One, I've had one that's been identified by different constituents of mine, that being where Briarwood connects to the library in that crosswalk. It's very busy. There are people who maybe aren't from the city that don't value safety as much as they should. They're driving too quickly through there. It's a high-traffic area by foot by disabled people and people in general. And we need to figure out how we can regularly monitor it and improve it better, whether it's security cameras or just figuring out that correct rhythm in the future more. So I just want to encourage that process. Thank you.
Mr. Bjork?
Yeah, real quick on what Sean's talking about, that's a police code action, isn't it, for speeding? So that's not something that your group is working with, is it?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
All right. I'm looking at the security monitoring aspect of regular monitoring. And it could be put in with when a person uses the button. That way, there's something that the police could follow up with and be able to figure out a better regular rhythm that they could potentially use as far as just monitoring, whether it's code enforcement in the sense that you're talking about traditional or in the sense of the police, you have to bring awareness so we can get better regular monitoring key locations. But I get your point, Jeff. Thank you.
All right, good. All right, Tyler, my question is, I know the signs have been a headache in a sense, but what's number two on your list behind signage enforcement?
Number two? Just looking at my paper here.
Yeah, please.
Nuisances. So general nuisances. So typically, somebody has an old fridge in their yard or piles of wood all over their house or their yard. Just generally like things that are meant to be indoors that are not, that are outdoors. We see a lot of couches out in the front yard or on the boulevards. That falls into that category, so.
Okay, so nuisance are more visual than sound or anything else?
Correct.
Okay. And then, talking about that garbage and trash out there that has to be picked up, do we do anything as a city where we send the city crew over to help pick up a couch and throw it away? Or are they on their own? Or what do we do for assistance?
Um, we have done that in the past. I've dealt with some, for example, once in a while, we'll get rentals where tenants will move out and they'll leave a couch. Or we've had, typically, if somebody gets a couch dumped on their lawn, which happens, and they don't really want to spend money to get rid of it, we'll try and help them out if, you know, in certain cases, and we can have our public works grab those things.
And then my final one was knowing that the landlord association in Wisconsin is a strong one. How difficult is it for you to get into rentals and find out that there's violations happening? Somebody's renting out a basement without an egress window, or there's too many cars parked here. There's too many individuals in this one unit. What type of difficulties are you having there? And how can you, what do you need to improve that effort? And I'm a landlord too, but I, I think we're failing on or falling short on what's happening.
I think Amy could speak to this better than I could.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, so the state did remove some of our control when it comes to resident or rental inspections. So right now, from that perspective, it's on a call basis only. So if, if our building inspector gets a call that there's an issue, he'll respond, but it's not on a proactive approach.
Right. So are we following through as strongly or as effectively as possible with ones that are being called on?
Yes, definitely.
You think so?
I do, yes.
All right. I, I'll talk to you later, but I think I have some evidence that we're falling short. Okay? That's it for me.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Next up, Ms. Odine, did you have anything at all?
No, thank you very much.
Okay.
And thank you, Tyler.
All right. Don't go far, Tyler. Next, we'll close the council meeting and open up a public hearing to, to talk, to receive a presentation from Tyler again regarding the MS4 permit. So we will move into, we'll move into a public hearing. Tyler, go ahead and do your presentation for us.
This one's quick, I promise.
Well, we'll see.
Okay. So every year, so the city has, has an MS4 permit through the Wisconsin DNR. And what that is, is a municipal separate storm sewer system. And what that means is the rainwater doesn't go through the same pipes as the sanitary sewer. And with that, we have a couple of requirements. One of them is to do a, like a public presentation, which this is also a requirement of. And I'm just going to go through some quick highlights from 2023 regarding the exciting world of stormwater. In 2023, we were very busy in town. We had 10 active construction sites, which were greater than one acre. That one acre is an important number because as soon as a constructed site is greater than that, it triggers a requirement by us having that permit to do an erosion and sediment control inspection once every 45 days. And in 2023, we performed 87 construction site inspections, looking for issues as are on these slides. In the first picture on the left, you know, there's, you can see the silt fences down. There's erosion happening, there's a bunch of staples. And just to the left of that is a stormwater pond. The middle picture, pile of dirt sitting on the road. And if I'm remembered correctly, rained after that, and a lot of that soil got tracked all around the road. And another thing we look for is just good housekeeping practices in general, making sure trash and garbage is picked up, disposed properly, so it's not blowing all over the place, like in the third picture. And there's also a pond just downhill from that as well. In 2023, there was one illicit discharge reported to the DNR that was at Rise Baking, and they had a tanker truck of corn syrup, had a malfunction, and went into our storm sewer system. The DNR, or they had a company come out to clean that all up. We, we got the final report from the DNR, and everything's good. We completed our annual Lake St. Croix phosphorus TMDL compliance report. In the Lake St. Croix watershed, there was an issue with phosphorus. So MS4 cities were required to have a certain reduction in phosphorus. It was 46% reduction. And we met this the last time, last year, and we've met that again this year. We performed 51 outfall inspections, looking for evidence of illicit discharge or anything that needed to be repaired, making sure nothing's going into the river. We inspected 71 stormwater ponds out of 385. We're on a rotating basis for inspections of those throughout our permit cycle. When we're looking at those, we're looking for any, anything that shouldn't be there, any algae growth, anything that's overgrown, garbage, things that need to get cleaned up so we, those ponds can perform to their design, you know, how they're designed to. Our public works, excuse me, our public work staff performed 640 inspections on our storm water infrastructure and made 67 different repairs throughout town. That may be manhole or inlet on the street, making sure those things are functioning properly. And 2023 was a good year for grants. We were awarded a FEMA and Wisconsin Division of Environmental Management grant, the Building Resilient Communities Grant. With this, we're planning to do some updated modeling to our watershed, identifying any, you know, problem areas and find any solutions to prevent flooding. We're going to study the effects of the Hopland Park Master Plan on that watershed. This work is scheduled for this year. Second, we got a Wisconsin DNR, the Urban Nonpoint Source Storm Water Management Grant. This is a 50% match grant, and we're going to use this to update our city's stormwater quality modeling, as well as update the city's stormwater utility program, which has not been updated since 2007. And this work is scheduled for 2025. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for Tyler? Actually, we're in public hearing, so hold on just a second. Anybody in the public have any questions or comments regarding the MS4 permit? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and open up the council hearing, and we will, I will accept a motion. Uh, this is the only reading. I don't, is there a first? This is, this only requires one reading.
There's no ordinance here, so there's no second hearing.
Yeah. So, oh, there's nothing to, there's nothing, nothing to motion on. Oh, okay. I got a motion in a second on my little chief.
There is, there's a resolution.
There's a resolution. All right. There is a resolution.
I will make a motion.
Mr. Carroll?
Second.
Beerstead. Okay, now discussion. Mr. Downing.
All right, my question. Was this the meeting that satisfies the public requirement you're making for the comment?
Sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
It's in, in the reading on this, it talks about the opportunity for a public comment. Does this, um, have that opportunity?
Yes.
Turn your mic on, Sean.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat what I said, so it's for the record. In, in the packet, it talks about having a required meeting so the public knows that they have an opportunity to comment. Was this the meeting for that?
Yes.
Thank you. And my concern stems from, was this put in the River Falls Reader? Or was it put in our utility packet by chance?
I do not know the answer to that.
Kevin, would you know? Okay, thank you. And like, so for the future, and I just want to encourage this process that we have what's called an open and transparent government in the sense where people are informed and invited and welcome to be part of an open process. If they're not informed that we're doing something, they know we have meetings, but they don't necessarily know what we're asking them to discuss with us, their opinions. And if you would invite them and welcome into that process, they'd want to help improve the city and make it better. So we should consider looking at those two in the future to improve our city. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so we got a motion by Carroll, second by Beerstead for the resolution in the packet. All in favor? Actually, we got a roll call vote.
Bjork.
Yes.
Beerstead.
Yes.
Morset.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It's one item. Resolution to award the grant that Tyler just mentioned, the WEM BRIC Flood Study to Strand and Associates. Adopting this resolution would award the study to Strand and Associates, Inc. That is all that's on the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull that item?
Mr. Council President, I'd like to pull consent agenda item.
Mr. Downing wants to pull that. There are no other items, so Mr. Downing, go ahead.
All right. Resolution to award WEM BRIC flood study to Strand Associates. In the packet, you'll notice that the two other groups declined to bid on this particular item. And that left Strand to be the sole winner on this. And I believe they can do an efficient job. I guess my question, though, is, is the recommendation from the city staff pending on the complete, or I shouldn't say complete, but the amount of grant funding guaranteed? Because it talks about the estimated cost project being $183,500 and making the city share $45,875. So for me, it makes sense to go forward with this if, if that's the case. But if it doesn't, would we rebid?
Mr., well, just a second, Mr. Downing. If I look at the packet, there were three bidders. There were five total packets, so there were three bidders that returned the bid. So they're not the only ones who bid.
Oh, so we, so there was a couple other ones that didn't decline.
There was Strand, SEH, and MSA. Ayers and TKD did not bid, but Strand and SEH and MSA did.
Thank you for, thank you for stating that. I must have overlooked that. But my point, though, is you had a couple that declined. Now, you're not looking at the recommendation from the sense of just who won the bid in the sense. You're looking at the actual getting 75% of the grant being the main thrust of your recommendation, right?
Yeah, I would ask City Engineer Nikleski to come and respond to how they evaluated the proposals.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this was, the city has been awarded the FEMA grant. We will be receiving, if we move forward, we'll be receiving the 75% coverage up to $183,500. So this was a kind of a different RFP to write. We, we had to evaluate each RFP based on how much these consultants thought they could do with that 100, it's in the sources and uses, but with that $137,000 or $137,625 of grant money and $43,000 or $45,875 of stormwater utility fund money to match that.
So Todd, that amount is, 75% is guaranteed, is what you're saying?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. That answers my question. Mr. Council President, I move approval for consent agenda.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. First by Downing, second by Beerstead. Ms. O'Dean, you, I don't want to ignore you. I don't see you raising your hand, so I assume you're okay.
I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Will the clerk please do a roll call?
Morsett?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yes.
O'Dean?
Yes.
Beerstead?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
All right. Got that done. Next, we'll move on to the Administrator's Report. Tonight, we have Community Development Director Peterson, or Community Development Services Director. I got to look at her tag. Pinch-hitting for Mr. Simpson. Do we have any questions about the Administrator's Report? Anyone at all? All right. I think you got off easy there. We will move on to closed session. So we will recess into closed session per Wisconsin State statutes for the following purposes. 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which this governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility to which city administrator. I need a motion to move into closed session in a second. Anybody?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I want to give that one to Bjork, and Carroll is the second. And can you ask for roll call, please, Kristi?
Carroll?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yes.
Beerstead?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
O'Dean?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to let everybody move through here and then go to closed.